I'd like to call to order the Westmont Village Board meeting of September 9th, 2021, to order at 6:00 PM and ask Clerk Kszynski for a roll call, please.
Mayor Gunther.
Here.
The clerk's here. Trustee Barker.
Here.
Trustee Brady.
Here.
Trustee Guzzo.
Here.
Trustee Little.
Here.
Trustee Nero.
Here.
Trustee Simonovic.
Here.
Attorney Zemanek. No, he's here.
He's here.
Village manager, May.
Here.
And assistant manager, Parker.
Here.
Would everybody please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'd like to welcome everyone. At this point, open forum. Chief, do we have anybody here? This is the opportunity for anybody whose item is not on the agenda to address the board. Seeing no one, I will close open forum and move on to reports. My report's first, and I'd like to call upon Chief Riley to give a COVID-19 update. Chief, are you in there, out there somewhere?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Village Board. So again, our numbers continue to rise in DuPage County, 101,331, along with 1,419 deaths. In Westmont, our numbers continue to rise, 2,554 cases. And the good news is, it's still 89 deaths. That's no, numbers have gone up since two weeks ago. However, the number that has gone up in the last two weeks, it's cases in Westmont in the last 14 days, we have 69 new cases in Westmont. Positivity rate is 5.7. In DuPage County, the positivity rate is 5.1. And on a conference call yesterday with the DuPage County Health Department, they fully expect these numbers to rise in the next two weeks due to Labor Day weekend. And the last thing, Mayor, is I'm not sure if you've heard this afternoon, but President Biden has asked the Department of Labor to issue a ruling requiring all employers with 100 or more employees to ensure their workforce is fully vaccinated or produce a negative COVID test result once a week. This is something that the manager spoke about earlier. The governor came out with a new mandate last Friday, the same thing for healthcare workers, EMS personnel, and school staff. So there would be more to come on that from President Biden, but that may affect the village with, I believe we have over 100 employees. So that'll be something that staff continues to look at and work towards. So unless you have any questions, Mayor or Board?
And Trustee Simonovic brought that to our attention, but the President was recommending. The New Orleans, as far as the hurricane, I understand we sent some assistance?
Yes, Mayor, we sent an engine down there on Tuesday morning. They left the fire station at 5:00. They stopped in Springfield Field at the Aima Building to get sworn in of oath to take the office down in Louisiana. And then they drove through all night, rotating drivers every four hours, and arrived in Louisiana safely in our engine at 3:30 in the morning. They got to bed at 4:30 in the morning, up at 8:00 in the morning for breakfast, and 9:00 they were working. Last night, they were going through homes, checking on carbon monoxide levels, and they were assisting volunteer firefighters in their stations, handling calls for them. They're working 12 hours on, 12 hours off. It's a 14-day deployment. They're due to be back hopefully in Westmont September 21st or 22nd. So I would ask for you, the Board, and everybody in attendance to please continue to put your thoughts and prayers with our staff as they are seeing destruction and other things down there that you would never seen, you know, usually up here in the Chicagoland or Illinois area. So please keep them in your thoughts and prayers.
And Chief, while you're still there, 9/11 ceremony, our 20-year unfortunate anniversary, we're sponsoring a remembrance?
Sure, we're having a remembrance. It's under Trustee Johanna Guzzo's report, but I'll mention it. It is this Saturday, 10:00 AM, at our police fire facility located at 500 North Cass at 10:00 AM. 20 years for a ceremony and remembrance of those that have lost their life on 9/11 or lately due to ongoing medical issues, especially with COVID-19. So I ask everybody that would more than happy to attend the ceremony, 10:00. Bring your friends, your families. We'll certainly do it social distance. The ceremony will be less than an hour between Chief Gunther and myself. We want to remember those that have lost or perished.
Thank you. Thanks, Chief. Now I'd like to call Chief Gunther, who's already at the podium. He has several items to talk about and then a proud promotion.
That's right. Thank you, Mayor. It's a great night for the Westmont Police Department. A couple of updates. I'd like to acknowledge Squad Car Night last Thursday. It was a huge success, our best squad car night ever. Huge thanks to the WSEC volunteers for allowing us to extend one more week past their regular deadline for the end of cruising nights. So thank you, WSEC, for hosting and for volunteering. We had over 60 squad cars in attendance. We had bagpipes and drums from the Chicago Police Department. It was a great event. I'd like to thank the Fire Department for being out and hoisting up the American flag over Cass and Irving. That was great. And we had a really good response on our Facebook page and really, we really promoted Westmont as it got passed along through social media in an extremely positive light. Second thing I'd like to talk about is our prescription drug takeback, which will be on October 23rd. That'll be at 500 North Cass, Fire Department Headquarters and the Mariano's location. And that will be from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and more information is available on the Village website. The Westmont Police Department will be hosting a paper shred event on October 30th, and that will be at 500 North Cass from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. We'll do it just like we did last year, which was, it was touchless for the people dropping off paper. All the police department staff and volunteers went to the cars and basically transacted all of the, took all the paper out of the cars, and it worked out really, really, really well. And last year was a record. Hopefully we'll beat that this year. And so next, we have two personnel items that I'd like to address. So I'd first like to have Sergeant Mike Wybler to the podium. And you want to grab the pot for me, sir? Sergeant Wybler is receiving his 20-year plaque this evening. He started in July of 2001, so just before 9/11 occurred. And he was promoted to sergeant in April of 2015 and has replaced Sergeant Gabrielewski as the administrative sergeant earlier this year. And so with that, the Mayor has a 20-year plaque for Sergeant Wybler.
What was your first day in 2020, 2001?
July 2nd. No, I was in the academy September 11th.
Congratulations.
First. And finally, and very importantly, we have a promotion of Detective Sean Ryan, now Sergeant Sean Ryan. And a little background, I had approached Manager May several months ago requesting the addition of adding a sergeant spot to the Police Department for a variety of reasons. I then came in front of the Board to increase the ordinance by one, to go from eight sergeants to nine sergeants. And then it was on the, you know, this is, you know, everything in government's a process. So the next process was the Fire and Police Commission meeting and deciding amongst the top three rank-ordered candidates for the spot of sergeant to choose from the top three. Sean Ryan attested previous for the position of sergeant along with numerous other police officers, and he was our number one, he was number one on the list. So the Fire and Police Commission chose him for promotion. And so Sean's here tonight to ceremonially be sworn in by the Mayor. Sean is a 19-year veteran of the Police Department. He was moved to detectives in November of 2017. He is currently serving as a detective and will until we backfill that position because we're moving Sergeant Ryan from investigations back to patrol so he can supplement the supervisory responsibilities of the patrol operations. He is currently a member of the DuPage County arson task force, which is, he's the only officer we've ever had on the arson task force, so that's very notable. And we're looking forward to several more years of Sergeant Ryan's leadership and expertise and calm demeanor out on the street with all the people he gets to supervise. So with that.
Aye. Your name?
Sean Ryan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The laws of DuPage County.
The laws of DuPage County.
The Westmont Village Code of Ordinances.
The Westmont Village Code of Ordinances.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties for the office of police officer.
The duties of the office of police sergeant.
Police sergeant. That's right. Sergeant. He corrected me. You know, said, oh, hey, very good. That's a test. To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
I'd like to start by thanking Mayor Gunther, Village Manager May, and the Village Board for allowing me to be here today. I'd like to thank Chief Gunther. Without him, I would not be here today. It's been an honor to work with you. I would also like to thank the Police and Fire Commission for placing your trust in me to serve as a sergeant in the Westmont Police Department. Most importantly, I would like to thank my family, those who are here and those who cannot make it. I would especially like to thank my wife and children, who have endured 19 years of missed birthday celebrations, school activities, sporting events, and holidays, and have stood by me through it all and continue to stand by me. Without their love and support, I would not be who I am today. Thank you for all your trust and support.
With that, we will adjourn to the Police Department, Sally Port, for a little reception. So thank you very much, Mayor.
Congratulations, and thank you. Chief, before you go, I'll point out that you're celebrating an anniversary today, too, so five years as.
I am. Today is my five-year anniversary as being named Acting Chief. So on September 9th, 2016, I was named Acting Chief, which my first order of business was to change the color of the uniform shirts, whether you made me the prime chief or not.
Very well.
So thank you for that.
Thank you. I have one more quick item, and then we'll move on to reports. On November 10th, save the date, we're continuing our plans for our 100th anniversary celebration. So there'll be a couple dedications. Just keep an eye out for the schedule of events. It'll be coming on our website. Now I'm going to turn to Clerk Kszynski if she has anything.
I just have a couple announcements. PRC is requesting art submissions for resilience projects. PRC is holding an online exhibit about sharing experiences about living through the pandemic. See our website for more information. And there's a program that helps people in low-income households pay for home energy services such as gas and electric service. More information on that is also on the Village website. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. And we're going to turn to Trustee Brady.
Regarding the historical structure plaque, black program. The goal of the program is to highlight Westmont's history, identifying and promoting awareness and appreciation of the buildings that have a historic or architectural merit. Contact our Historical Society for more information. Regarding our Chamber of Commerce, the Pet Palmerade and Party in the Park will be on Sunday, September 19th, the southeast corner of Ty Warner Park. It's from 11:00 AM until 2:00 PM. Be sure to bring your pets and any of your friends. Visit the vendors, participate in the pet parade. There's more information on the West Mount Chamber website. Regarding the Westmont Dining Guide, which is mailed out to the residents, the Chamber of Commerce has published a new Westmont Dining Guide listing 108 local dining destinations. This dining guide has been mailed to homes in Westmont. It's an easy-to-use electronic copy. The dining guide is also available online at westmont.chamber.com. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you. And it's well done. We have a copy here. It's well done, and look for that in your mail. Trustee Nero.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple items tonight. Our next Public Works Committee meeting is September 23rd, right here at Village Hall, 4:30 PM. And then next is our, just an announcement, our Public Works Open House is going to be September 25th. So please save the date from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. It's going to be at the Public Works Facility at 155 East Burlington. And I believe they're putting Trustee Barker and myself to work on that morning. So if you're desperate and want to say hi to us, come on out. It's going to be a great event.
You have nothing better to do.
That's right. I know Mike's putting a lot of work into it. It's going to be a great event. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll go back over here to Trustee Simonovic.
Thank you, Mayor. Earlier this evening, we held the Administration and Finance Committee meeting. A couple things I will touch on from that. We've already talked about drafting some policy regarding the vaccine mandates. We're continuing to work on scheduling some joint meetings with other local committees, such as the school districts and the library board. We discussed addressing some revisions to the block party policy for next year, as well as making sure that we are up to date with our mandatory sexual harassment training and Open Meetings Act training. Also, the Deputy Liquor Commissioner stepped up to give us an update on some video gaming. We touched previously on the American Rescue Plan grant. We have just been notified that the state has reviewed and verified our submittal. So that's good news, and we should be receiving our first payment within the next few weeks. We plan to use some of this to offset water rate increases that we won't have to do now. I've been advertising every week that the Village is still hiring. We are accepting applications through the Village website for a couple of items. There is a firefighter candidate program. This is a 52-week volunteer program that provides the necessary education and training to become a firefighter and work in the fire service. Upon successful completion, candidates may be eligible to become probationary on-call firefighters with the Westmont Fire Department. We are also in various stages of the hiring process for positions we previously discussed, such as the Deputy Director of Planning, a part-time permit coordinator, the Administrative Assistant for the Fire Chief, as well as a mechanic in the Public Works Department. That's all I have.
Well, thank you. Trustee Barker.
Thank you, Mayor. Westmont First will meet on September 20th, and the EIC meeting is September 13th, Monday night at 5:30 PM at the library. And I just want to get the word out on behalf of the library, they're hosting a Monarch Fest September 13th through the 18th. There's one week of monarch activities. They always do a great job there with that, and there's a lot of passion in Westmont for the monarchs. And I understand, I think it was last week, they started their migration, the monarchs, and they head towards, from the south, they head towards Chicago area. And then there's more information about their festival and the details on the library website. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Little.
Thank you, Mayor. In addition to Trustee Simonovic's report on the Administration-Finance Committee meeting that we just held, we discussed as a Board the Water Bill Assistance Program. However, Assistant Village Manager Parker found out that DuPage County is going to be working on one. And since we have a very good rapport with the DuPage County, we're going to allow them to develop this and come up with the eligibility program for the Water Bill Assistance Program. So we're going to go on their back and let them do all the work, and that'd be great for us. We also discussed the facade grant program. And back in 1996, there was a Main Street Westmont program where people could ask for assistance with designing a facade and getting a grant for that. So we're going to be reviewing that in the next couple of months, and we'll be posting that obviously soon. Our cruising night wrap-up, Westmont Special Events had the most successful cruise night ever. We broke our car count record four times this year, and our new record is 464 cars. In one evening. Thank you for all the volunteers who worked this event for the past 14 weeks. This was grueling, but we did it, and we're very proud to have said that it's all done and we can move on and make plans for next year. We did have a contest to see who would come up with the closest number to the actual 464 number of cars, and we had two winners. So we'd be talking to those guys. They hit it right on the nose, so we were very excited about that. And then last of all, we'd ask everybody to take a look at the cruising night survey. It's on the westmontevents.com website, and you can give us your opinion. I know a lot of people have called into the office this afternoon requesting us to carry it further into the year, and we would take a look at it next year, obviously. We're not going to be worrying about it too much this year. So that's all I have, Mayor, and thank you.
Well, thank you. And I do have to comment that, or I think everybody has heard this before, but the Westmont Special Events Corp. is all volunteers. They run this event for the entire time, along with the Taste of Westmont and the crawls and a lot of other activities through the year. So thank you. They've put a lot of volunteer hours in. And I'm going to go over here to Trustee Marie Johannik Guzzo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple things this evening. Our next Fire Public Safety Committee meeting is going to be October 21st, 4:30 here at Village Hall. Everyone is invited to attend. There is a new prescription drop box. The new drop box is located in the front lobby of the police-fire facility at 500 North Cass Avenue. Residents can now drop off unwanted prescription drugs during business hours. And the fire chief did comment on Saturday as our September 11th ceremony, 10:00 AM, 500 North Cass Avenue. And mark your calendars. The Fire Department Open House is going to be Saturday, October 2nd. Come to the Frank J. Johannik Headquarters Station for family fun, activities, displays, lunch, and more. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And I had one more item before we move on. The Greg House Museum is celebrating their 40th anniversary, the same time we're celebrating our 100th. And on Sunday, September 19th, from 1:00 to 4:00, they'll have, at the Greg House, we'll have live music, giveaways, contests for kids, Model T rides, and some 1920 films, and a storyboard of Westmont's history. So please try to attend. That's at the Greg House at Veterans Memorial Park. Moving on, items to remove from the consent agenda. Is there anybody who sees an item they'd like removed? Seeing none, I'd ask Manager May to please read.
Thank you. Consent agenda this evening consists firstly of the Village Board minutes. Board to consider approving the minutes of the Village Board meeting held August 26, 2021. It's followed by Finance Ordinance Number 10, the amount of $1,563,797.75. Several purchase orders. First one for RWS Window Systems, $26,452. It's for window replacement at the fire station headquarters building. Next purchase order, Swallow Construction Corp., $302,339.55. This is for the construction services for the 63rd Street Water Main Extension. You've already awarded the agreement. This is the purchase order to accompany that. Next purchase order, Baxter and Woodman, $32,000. This is the Water Tower IEPA Project Plan and Funding Assistance. So this is design engineering, but also applying for a grant with the IEPA and try and recoup, apply for a grant. Next is Safe Step LLC, $21,045.29. Says here, concrete sidewalk cutting. It's the actual grinding when we take the lips off of the, some certain tripping hazards. Next purchase order, Curry Motors, $43,219 is a replacement pickup truck in the Public Works Department. Next purchase order, again, Baxter and Woodman, $35,500. This is for the construction engineering services that go with the 63rd Street Water Main project. The total of those purchase orders is $460,555.84. Brings the total of the purchase orders with Finance Ordinance Number 10 to $224,353.59. There is, the community event is not on the consent agenda, so that concludes the consent agenda.
We do have the Wicked West Fest Halloween event, which is part of the consent.
That's listed as its own item, so it's not part of the consent agenda. We'll do that separate.
We'll do that separate. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as read?
Motion to approve, Little?
Second. Motion been made. Second. On the questions, comments. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Simonovic.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Motion passes. Do we go to community events now, Steve?
Yeah. Wicked West Fest Halloween events. Board to consider an ordinance approving the Westmont Chamber of Commerce hosted Wicked West Fest Halloween event scheduled for October 23rd, 2021. That request includes the community events permit, street closures, which will be Cass Avenue from Burlington to Chicago Naperville Road between 9:00 AM and 2:30 PM. And thirdly, a live amplified sound permit. Event is scheduled for October 23rd, 2021. This is an annual event and has grown considerably in recent years.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion made in second. To approve. Any comments? Second, none? Then I'd ask for a roll call, please.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Simonovic.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Motion passes. We'll move on to new business. A, 531 64th Street, a lot subdivision. Board to consider ordinance approving a preliminary plot of subdivision and a final plot of subdivision to create two lots at 531 64th Street in the R3 Single Family Residence District. And welcome back, our planner. And welcome back, our planner. Hennerfind, I say it right this time? Welcome back.
You can just call him Joe.
Joe, you're here.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and trustees. So what's before you is a fairly standard lot split. 531 64th Street actually did a preliminary lot split in 2008, but it was never fully executed, so a final plat never actually came through. So we did ask the applicant to do both a preliminary and final together. This is a 46,000 square foot lot, currently has a house on it. It's being subdivided into two lots of about 23,000 square feet each, 78 feet wide. It's fairly standard for what's been occurring on this street, and most of these homes are in the R3 district. It surpasses the minimum standards for an R3 property, so it doesn't even come close to the smallest lots in our R3 districts. It got a unanimous approval on August 11th through planning and zoning, and the applicant is here just in case you have any questions.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Barker.
Second, Guzzo.
Motion made in second. Any comments? The applicant want to say anything? You don't need to. All right. He says, hurry up and vote. Anybody in the audience? Seeing none, I'd ask for a roll call, please. Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Simonovic.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business B, 23 West Quincy Street, a B1 permit for a fitness center. Board to consider ordinance approving a B1 development permit for Pilates Core Incorporated, Dana Santi Pilates, to operate a fitness center at 23 West Quincy Street. Planner Joe.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. So this is 23 West Quincy Street. It's right outside our doorstep here. This most recently got a special use approval for the credit union, which I think that was the last use that was there. The Pilates business that is represented by Dana Santi, and she is here tonight, she has a little presentation after I speak, is currently located in Claritin Hills. She's been operating for some time, wants to take over the space, doesn't need to do a lot of renovations to it. I think there's one kind of office space that they built out in there that would be removed, but wants to move into the space and bring all her clients over here, as well as getting new clients. The actual use of the fitness use, it used to be a special use, particularly in the downtown, no longer needed because of recent text amendments that were passed. So other than a B1 development permit and the necessary business license and any type of building permits for a build-out, those are the basic hurdles in order for to get her to open at the location, and I will go ahead and turn it over to her.
So I'm just going to arrow it.
Pan down as you do.
Okay. And that'll change it. So as much as I wanted Joe to do a demonstration for you this evening, I do realize he's bombarded being somewhat back in the game. But my name is Dana Santi, and I started doing Pilates, a form of exercise, in 1996. And in that point, there were two studios in the state of Illinois. One was in Evanston, and one was on Rush Street. And in Evanston, it was a training center where this 70-year-old woman would come and go from New York, and she was a student, an actual student of Joe Pilates, who was an actual man. Some people don't realize that, and who developed an exercise for men, which is even funnier, because it's so related to women. But, so I was allotted an education that money can't buy anymore, and so all the teachers that I got to work with were students of Joe's. So I had, I opened my first studio in 2002 in La Grange. I worked in a training center in Evanston and then the West Loop for five years before that. And this here is currently the space as it is. So the, where those barn doors are, those will just be taken out, those partition walls, and then that bank stuff, the counters and all of that. So then it's just a big, open, streamlined space. And then leave the back somewhat as is. This is my current space in Claritin Hills, so you can kind of see what the equipment looks like. And, might be another one. Yeah. Here's another one. So it's, the bark looks worse than the actual bite is. It's all streamlined and very old school. So again, I have pieces in there that they don't even make anymore the way that they make them. The studio operates mostly Monday through Friday. Some weekends, we do a few workshops when time will allow us to get back into that mode. This was my studio. It was a previous space in Downers Grove that was meant to be temporary. And so again, I work best in just big, open spaces. These are the plans of what is there and just what's going to be taken away, which is pretty much just all that middle stuff with a changing room in the back, and the restroom is back there, as well as just a countertop and sink for the teachers, for a couple of teachers. And then I will work with Joe on a sign. I'm not sure what the signage is, but that's the sign as it is now in the Walker Building in Claritin Hills. And it would be something that looks like this logo here. And that's it, unless you have any questions.
I would imagine you have a lot of individuals who are your clients will be following you.
Yes. I've had some, yes. I've had some since day one that I've opened. Yeah. Being near the train is a plus, because we get some teachers, if I do host a workshop, being able to go in and out of the city is a plus for them. You know, they come from all over. They'll Airbnb, you know, I could have people come from Australia. They stay at an Airbnb, they walk to the studio, they jump on the train when it's done, and they go stay in the city. So that was another bonus that I've learned along the way.
Trustee Little.
How many different classes do you offer a day, and what levels do you have?
So the majority of what I do is more personal training in Pilates. So it's a teacher and a client kind of working one-on-one. If we do classes, and we have in the past, we, you know, we just, I'm looking forward to the day that Zoom isn't a thing so much. If we do classes, they're a small group, and so they, I don't, we don't level, because that's not the school that I was trained in, right? Pilates is Pilates, and when taught correctly, it is for, it's for everybody. But you, you know, again, it's a certain kind of training. Pilates became a household name in the year 2000, because the man who thought he obtained the trademark lost the trademark. So then it just became a broad name, so anybody could use it for anything. Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other comments? I need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Little.
Second, Nero. Motion made in second. Any more comments? Thank you for choosing Westmont.
Oh, I live, I love this town.
Well, we better take a vote, but when do you plan on opening?
Hopefully sometime in October or November 1st would be, yeah.
No other comments, I'd ask for a roll call, please. Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Simonovic.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Motion passes. Welcome to Westmont.
Well, thank you very much.
Employees at lunchtime.
Exactly. Just walk right over.
Intro class.
Exactly.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Welcome to Westmont.
Thank you.
New business C, Engineering Agreement for 2021 Liberty Park Water System Phase 1 Study. Board to consider ordinance authorizing an engineering agreement with Baxter &amp; Woodman for Phase 1 study of the unincorporated subdivision of Liberty Park. Director Ramsey.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an unincorporated area that's bounded by Park Street on the west and Lincoln Avenue on the east, 38th Street on the north, and Ogden Avenue on the south. Baxter &amp; Woodman will evaluate the water system need to support the residents of Liberty Park. I've been working with DuPage County on getting a survey out to the residents out there, and we've had just under 400 respondents. 85% of them are in favor of the village moving forward, developing plans, getting cost estimate for the project, and showing great interest in us moving forward with this. So that's why we have this engineering agreement with Baxter &amp; Woodman to start that study. We request a sum of $24,200 for Phase 1 study of Liberty Park subdivision.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Guzzo.
Second, Nero. Motion made in second. Comments?
If I can describe it a little further, too, so that, you're all familiar, but Liberty Park is in an unincorporated territory. It's roughly a square half-mile of property northwest of Ogden and Cass Avenue. They have, Mike, you know, Director Ramsey pointed out, because they're unincorporated, there's the direct involvement of DuPage County, and did the initial outreach. Of any of you that have been paying attention to their online presence, they're struggling with water quality issues. They have, half the subdivision has its own community well that, one, I'll call it a deep well, but it's relative, I guess. And then half the subdivision, they have individual wells on their own property, and they're all suffering with water quality issues. So the survey was to gauge their interest in seeking more information, of which came back very positively. So we're doing that. This is the preliminary engineering. It is in Westmont's planning area. It will, it will only be served by our water system should we, you know, grow into that area. So the engineering design is to, is to design all that, what would be involved, what would that all cost, put it together, and then together with the, if it comes to it, we're pursuing grant monies, there's federal infrastructure grants, water system improvements are big, so we hope to access those as well. But, you know, the bottom line is that there's going to be a cost to invest in the infrastructure and the water system and get everybody, you know, hooked on. And so they will all eventually be Westmont residents, but right now they're unincorporated, DuPage County.
And I think, you know, Trustee Barker has mentioned before, we're concerned that they get safe water, and I think we've been contacted, so this is a good step. Any other comment?
Mayor, I'd just like to add to that. You know, I think it's important to them that when this, I didn't see the survey, but when this is discussed in meetings or whatever, I think it's important to point out to them that they're going to end up in Westmont anyway, but the escalation in the cost is something that probably only Spencer could calculate. You know, it's going to, it's not going to ever go down, I don't feel, but that'd be pretty rare if it did, but they need to know that, you know, it's less costly today than it will be five years from now, and the length of that project is years. It's not months or weeks, it's years to get it done. So that's, that's important that we keep bringing that up when they're making a decision, you know.
That's a good, very good point. You need to also do it before there's more serious issues. So any other comments? Roll call, please. Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Simonovic.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business D, Proposal for Remodel Fire Headquarters Station Bathroom. Board to consider ordinance approving an agreement with KH Renovations to remodel the men's bathroom at the Fire Department's Headquarters Station. Chief Riley.
Thank you, Mayor. KH Renovations proposes to furnish in accordance with the specifications filed in the proposal, material, labor, to remodel the men's bathroom at headquarters. We did go out and get a couple proposals for this, and KH Renovations was approximately $10,000 under the second proposal.
And a local vendor.
And a local, is there a dollar amount? We don't have a, we don't need?
There's a dollar amount listed in the ordinances that were circulated to you, and listed in the proposal in your agenda packet. I don't know them offhand.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Yeah, a question.
Yes.
Should this be submitted to, you know, outside bidding?
So there is an exception in the state statute for competitive bidding for public works projects, where the Village Board can waive or dispense with competitive bidding by a two-thirds vote of the corporate authorities, and I mentioned that in an email to all of you last night. I think there's an open question whether, when you're doing renovations to an existing building, such as just a bathroom renovation, does that even qualify as a public improvement, like a water main improvement or street improvement would? Nevertheless, the Village Board, a year or two ago, passed an ordinance stating that competitive bidding for public improvement projects is required, and then listed exceptions to the competitive bidding requirements. And one of the exceptions was for renovations for existing village buildings.
I have another question. I'm new on the ward. Has this ever, has this, care required a bit making exceptions when there's work being done in the village like this?
The Village Board voted for, and I, voted to waive competitive bidding and approve a proposal from this exact same contractor for renovations to the police department to several of their bathrooms. Basically, it's not the type of project that lends itself well to preparing a formal bid, advertising for bids, et cetera. It's relatively minor work in the scheme of things, and it seemed more expeditious to waive competitive bidding, and in this case, they found a local contractor. And if I can add to that, I mean, and to elaborate on your concern, the lawful competitive bidding and putting that out and advertising it and open it up to everyone, but we still do expect them to do, you know, competitive proposals. So they seek more than one price to do that and make sure that, you know, we're not just paying some extraordinary amount for, you know, work that it shouldn't be. So they have more than one quote for the work, you know, to do that, as they did with the police department when that work was done, too.
And again, by law, we're obligated to get a bid, not in the, 20,000 for other projects, yes, 20,000. But under that, we can do proposals, and this is the same one that did the police station. So.
Yes.
Can I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Guzzo.
Second, Little.
Motion made in second. Additional comments? And I think, Trustee Brady, it's always good to, when you're a taxing body, to get proposals and make sure you're getting the best price. So I'm sure Chief Riley and Manager May did a good job. Any other comments?
Yeah, Mayor, I'd like to say I did read the proposal, and, you know, it was, there's a lot of words in there like reuse, so it's not even complete. It's budget-minded in defense of the project. It's a commercial bathroom, so it's more costly than your home, but it's also budget-minded where they scrutinized everything, because there were items that were being reused. It's just not a, you know, glamorous thing. It's just a luxury. That's all.
Any other? Seeing none, roll call, please. Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
No.
Trustee, oh, I'm sorry. Trustee Simonovic.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business E, Proposal for Remodel Fire Station Number 2 Kitchen. Board to consider ordinance approving an agreement with KH Renovations to remodel the kitchen at the Fire Department Station 2. And again, Chief Riley.
Thank you, Mayor. KH Renovations, again, proposes to KH Renovations, again, proposes to furnish in accordance with the specifications detailed in the proposal, materials, labor necessary to remodel station two kitchen. As you recall, also, we've hosted Chicago Fire, the TV show, at this location numerous occasions. And each time that they're here, they have requested dollars be put towards the kitchen remodel. We also did get a second proposal on this one also. And this proposal is about $8,000 below the other proposal.
And again, Chief, you mentioned that some of the funds we get from the filming of Chicago Fire, we're using it for this or paying for most of it?
Correct. But $10,000 is in the, that was given to us by Chicago Fire over a couple of the filmings, and that money is going towards this project.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Little.
Second Nero.
Motion made in second. Comments? Trustee Simonovic.
I know you mentioned that KH did the renovation of the other bathroom at the fire department, or at the police station, which was very well done on my recent tour. There was also some renovations at the police department's kitchen. Was that KH as well?
I'm pretty sure it was. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody, again, Chief said, you know, it's not a bid thing. It's a proposal, and he got it for 8,000 less than the other. So, and they're local, so I don't see a problem with it. No other comments? I'd ask for a roll call, please. Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Simonovic.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Motion passes. New Business F, voluntary annexation, 3901 North Adams Street. Board to consider ordinance amending ordinance 2021-002, annexing real property located at 3901 North Adams Street to remove property from Northwestmont. Special assessment, SSA. Attorney Zemina.
Thank you. This item is in response to a phone call that the deputy clerk of the village received from the DuPage County clerk, who expressed concerns that this property was part of the Northwestmont District SSA, which is an SSA imposed on properties in mostly like the Liberty Park area that receive Village of Westmont fire services, but are in unincorporated, right, unincorporated DuPage County, but are served by Westmont. There was a fire protection district that was a paper district only that levied taxes. That district was dissolved, and the village approved an SSA to charge these property owners for the value of the fire services provided in lieu of the taxes that they were paying. Upon annexation of this property, I guess the clerk expressed a concern that it's still part of this SSA, but it's annexed to the village. And I, his concern was, well, it's going to, this property's going to get taxed twice. It's going to receive the special service area assessment, and it's going to receive taxes from the Village of Westmont. I left him, and therefore, he wanted the annexation ordinance amended to remove the property from the SSA. I called him, and I left him a message stating that this property is owned by the village. It's tax exempt. It was never, taxes were never levied against this property, or assessments were never levied. And taxes won't be levied against this property because it's tax exempt. Nevertheless, we kind of hastily put this on the agenda to state that the village will take whatever actions are necessary to remove it from the SSA. Since it's not part of the tax levy, it's not included in the tax levy. Hopefully, this is just a simple map amendment, or this individual at the county clerk's office will understand the circumstances and say, no actions necessary. But we wanted to put it on the agenda to satisfy the clerk's request. And we may be following up with another ordinance to, if further actions necessary, to remove this from the SSA.
No action needed tonight? Just information tonight?
Well, my preference is information, this is information only because this ordinance may need to be tweaked once I actually speak with the individual at the county. This arose just last Thursday, so it was rushed a bit and maybe more complicated than I had hoped.
Okay. So we have a motion to postpone it?
Yes, please.
You need a motion to postpone this item?
Motion to postpone Nero.
Second, Little.
Motion made in second to postpone. Any comments? Seeing none, roll call, please. Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Simonovic.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
New Business G, amendment to class V liquor license classification. Board to consider ordinance amending Chapter 10, Article 3, Section 10-81 of the Village Code of Ordinances to allow individuals 18 years and older to serve alcohol in food and restaurants and hotels. I don't know if Deputy Liquor Commissioner. Oh, Attorney Zemina.
Yeah, the Deputy Liquor Commissioner won't be attending, but I believe he presented to you in committee about this item. And in essence, the state statute allows persons 18 years or older to serve alcohol in restaurants or hotels where food is served. This amendment would allow, currently, Westmont requires people to be 19 years or older. There have been requests from local restaurants and hotels to lower that minimum age to 18 because of the shortage of finding people in the workforce to staff their restaurants and bars and hotels. The local liquor commissioner is in favor of this. And again, anyone who serves alcohol still must be Basset trained and certified.
The initial person has to be 21.
Who makes the, takes the order, makes the sale.
Yes. Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
Yeah, a question. Who's going to train these, in the 18-year-olds as they're being hired? The owner of the business?
It's the owner of the business's responsibility to send them to this training course, which is called Basset Training, where they get a certification that they've gone through a responsible training course on how to serve alcohol. And they have to keep records of that for inspection by the village.
Let's look. Motion to approve Barker.
Second Nero.
Motion made in second. And this is something, just to point out, the state is already allowing.
Yeah. The state allows it, and many other municipalities allow it as well.
It just helps in the hiring process. Any other comments? Seeing none, roll call, please. Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Simonovic.
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes miscellaneous. Anybody got anything? I do have to ask for a brief executive session. I need a motion to adjourn the executive session pursuant to Section 2C1 of the Open Meetings Act to discuss the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the village. Do I have a motion to go to executive session?
Motion, second.
Motion made in second.